All right, why don't we stand and do the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance.
Who's the flag?
The United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, can we get a roll call?
Okay, roll call. Dr. Randalls.
Present.
Ms. Slade. Señora Slade.
Present, I'm sorry, I was getting a pen from my colleague.
She's on her way.
Here I am.
She responded to "señora", that's what it's like. Dr. Phelps.
Present.
Dr. Flores.
Present.
Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Matthias, yes. Pastor Moody.
Present.
Mr. Ross.
Present.
President Baker.
Here.
Right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Or?
All right, everybody agree? Great, we have an agenda. So, well, welcome back, it's been a few weeks. So, Mo and I are rusty evidently, so.
Well, I was busy.
That was my fault.
I was trying to assist my colleagues find glass. Ken, was it Ben or glasses?
So, but why don't we start with some celebrations?
Good deal. Dr. Baker and members of the board, I would like to ask Ken Clamperens to come forward, please.
We want to celebrate the significant improvement at the Roosevelt Building. You know Dr. Neketche Ezic? There are tenants of the Roosevelt Building, our only tenant, and part of the lease requires that they do all capital improvements. They had a need for a playground and brought forward using Kaboom. That was a bit of a challenge because Kaboom's contracts are somewhat restrictive and dealing with a property owner that was not the user was a little difficult. So, we worked through all that and ELNC was able to go through the process and the build and now has a playground at the Roosevelt Building. And there's a few slides behind you and I'll run through them while Dr. Ezic shares about the playground.
First of all, thank you so much for adding me to your agenda and thank you for having me come here. I just want to say that ELNC is such an emergent practice and it shows how a small group of people can rise up together and work and really change the face of early childhood in our community. And we didn't do it alone. Since 2013, when I was introduced to Ken, we walked through looking at possible buildings to use and we did come up to this. And then I reached out to Superintendent Neal and one thing I just said to her is that no matter what you do, you have to model us, be our model, be the model of all these children that we are working with. And she took that challenge because we know that navigating the system to get ELNC working is not going to be easy. So, I just wanted to publicly thank you for being our model and continue to do that. And Ken and now John and Matthew for really supporting our work is taking truly a village. So, it's not just the collaborative seven community anchor organization which are Baxter, Hispanic Center of West Michigan, the other way ministry, Steepwood Town Neighborhood Services, United Methodist Community House, and CICOM. It's not just those communities, but to have Grand Rapids Public School recognizing us as a pipeline to what we do. We get them ready, we send them off to you and it's really working. So, thank you so much. So, with that, we did submit a proposal to Kaboom. It wasn't easy, but again, everybody doing what it takes to get our student going. Ken and I went back and forth with a little crying and saying, okay, give me another email. That worked and we got, yeah, because Ken is like, well, you don't own the building. I said, I know that, but you do. So, we kind of quasi owned the building. So, it did, yeah.
We knew who was crying.
So, it did work and thank you so much. It's a really, I gave you a little fact sheet about that. Not only we put $300,000 in rehab in the old Roosevelt Childhood Center. The playground was estimated to be over $70,000. MWA Corporation doesn't want to release everything, but we know, we were told at the last minute that it's over 70,000. ELNC had to do additional 24,000 to cover food. We fed people for three days because we had two days to do the prep work. Everything was cut so that in that six hours that day, everything is put together. It took really a whole lot of manpower, transportation, putting people back and forth. John was very handy also helping us with doing transportation to move people because there was no parking. So, we literally have to use the churches around to be able to move our people in and out. The tree, our neighbors, well, our neighbor, your neighbor, had a tree that is really had so many purple berries all over the place. We had to remove the tree. So, the equipment and everything really literally working with Grand Rapids PACs to secure the equipment because all the shovel, all, everything we have to bring, Kaboom couldn't or wasn't able to bring all that. So, we got everything going. We have a state of the art playground that is now affording us to not only educate the children inside the classroom but also outside. My favorite is the outdoor classroom that we have over there. At the back of the sheet that I left for you, we have Kaboom send us information listed on the different types of equipment. Some of them I don't even know, I didn't know that's what it's called, but that's what it is right there. We have that. One thing that I needed to work with Ken in terms of for future repair, what is needed and based on what we were told, the equipment we have are so environmentally friendly because we wanted to make sure that we are keeping up with what's going on. And it's not going to cost so that much, you know, we were told that it's going to be about roughly $750 to be able to replenish the woodchips and get everything going because the equipment are guaranteed for 15 years. So, we're hoping that, you know, if we keep up with it, ELNC, one of the proposals I'll be making to the Board of Directors is to make sure that we have a playground and a building fund so that if anything happens, we'll be able to replace that right away. So, without taking so much of your time, we have really seen positive insight from that, from the staff, from the community. That was one time that we had that whole neighborhood working together from Roosevelt Park Association to the Police Department, everybody literally came out. The latest invitation we received from the Neighborhood Association and the Police Department is if they can use that building every now and then to have a Neighborhood Association meeting, just to bring everybody in there. And we literally walk both sides of the building to ask the children and the parents to be watching out for the playground. So, it's really interesting how the parents are reporting to us if the kids scratched the outdoor. But that, to me, that's what community is all about. And without talking so much, I just wanted again to thank you guys for letting us be your partner and again to ask you to continue to model us and further us because we need that and our children need that.
Thank you. And Keshi, and Keshi and I spent a year together as colleagues on Leadership Grand Rapids a few years ago and she's definitely an advocate for education in general, certainly early childhoods, so thanks for your work. Keshi?
Thank you.
Great partners.
Thank you.
Any comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Public comment for board agenda items?
None.
There are none. Are you out there? Okay. Secretary's report.
Okay. Okay, believe it or not, back to school. We have a celebration coming up, the annual back to school celebration is scheduled for Thursday, August 13th at John Ballpark Zoo. If the weather is inclement, City Middle School will serve as the alternative location. There'll be free food giveaways, bounce house, and information on GRPS schools. The event opens at four o'clock and runs through 8:00 PM. And so, we encourage you to register at 2015backtoschool eventbrite.com to schedule yourself to come to that. And also in September 8th, 2015, the first day of school, or the first day of 1516 school year, September 8th, is fast approaching. So, if you're new to the area, please call Committee and Student Services at 819-2150 for information to register your child for school. Students also are required to wear school uniforms at GRPS. And again, that's available at www.grps.org/uniforms. Now, that's all the report I have.
All right, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Larry O and John to come forward and Dr. Baker and members of the board, as they come forward to prepare for this conversation around the board, I am asking not only the board to approve the proposal that we are putting forward, but equally as important, I want the community to join us. I'm asking for the community to support the Grand Rapids Public Schools and join me and join us as we put forth this bond proposal for the Grand Rapids Public Schools Transformation Plan. Four years ago, we talked about what we were going to do with the Transformation Plan. We made the promises. We kept our promises and we are now ready to ask the taxpayers and members of this community to join us in making this happen for the schools and for our children. We did what we said we were going to do. Our graduation rates up, staff morale up, attendance, our assessments, everything that we said we would do, we've done. And I also made a promise to you, Dr. Baker, and to other members of this board and said that I would not ask for any additional help from the taxpayers until we could prove that we've done it. And I'm here to say that we've done it. And so, tonight I am going to ask the board to accept our language and help us, help me do the right thing by these children in this district. So, with that, I'm going to ask John and Larry O to present the information to you.
All right. Well, let me start first to take us back a little bit. Thank you, Dr. Baker, members of the board, Superintendent Neal. This really goes back, actually, 11 years, back to 2004 when Phase 1 of the building improvement plan started. But really, things kicked off in earnest when Teresa was appointed superintendent and led us through the transformation process that this board was unanimous in support of. And again, to reiterate what Teresa had said, that pledge that was made that we wouldn't ask the taxpayers or the voters for anything until we could prove the success story. And that success story is very real as the superintendent just shared and we have Phase 2 of the Transformation Plan where this is where we go on the offensive for the first time in two decades. This is where we invest for stability and growth. We all know this, we've had the best count days, we're seeing our enrollment stabilizing, we're seeing graduation rates increase, we're seeing the test scores go up, chronic absenteeism is down. We have energy and momentum and we took this story on the road at just as Superintendent Wetherall Neal did when she was appointed superintendent, she did a listening tour. And we've really been on a listening tour since February, since we first presented you with the concept of the bond proposal. And, you know, you've seen the PowerPoint, you know what we've done. I think we together have done 70 or 80 of these across the community and the response has been absolutely overwhelming. The, again, that energy, that excitement, people are believing again in GRPS. They're believing in the strategic direction of this district. They believe in this board, they believe in this dynamic superintendent. And when we go through and talk about the need, we talk about what we're looking to invest in, how the Transformation Plan has succeeded and what the Phase 2 looks like, individuals were eager to embrace it. And if anything, they're saying, they're asking us, well, when can we support this? When can we get out front? And obviously, we weren't there to ask for endorsements or anything like that. We were there to share information and gather that feedback. And we're here today to present you with the proposal that we're confident that this community can get behind. It is still at the $175 million amount. We still believe that that is the amount, that's ultimately a modest request, but we wouldn't want to ask for more than that. It gives the ability to address a large percentage of our infrastructure needs as well as our technology and security. By no means is this enough, but that's also why as part of the pledge is that this ask for this bond is not just to ask the taxpayers to pick up the full bill, that as part of this, as was reported recently in the media, and as you all know, we're looking at a capital fundraising campaign as well, where we'd look to raise between 15 and 25 million dollars from private donors, just like we did with UPREP, just like we did with Blandford. We have a proven track record, so this would become a true public-private partnership to implement Phase 2 of the Transformation Plan, to take this to the next level and to be one of those first urban districts, not just in the state but in the entire country, to be that turnaround success story, to increase our enrollment, to increase our academics, to stabilize and grow. That's a benefit not just to the children that we're honored to serve, but it's a benefit to every resident taxpayer in the city. It's a benefit to this region, it's about economic development, workforce development, and quality of life. And now's the time. And November 3rd is the date.
You have included in your packet the resolution that we're asking the board to approve tonight. This resolution will then allow us, and attached to that resolution, appendix or Exhibit A is the exact bond wording that'll go on the ballot. That needs to be filed with the city by four o'clock on August 11th. Once filed and approved, it cannot be changed. As you can see in the Exhibit A, we indicate this is, this came from our bond council in terms of the dollar amount that we're asking, what it's going to be used for in general terms, and we've talked about this all along in terms of capital improvements, technology, security, those kinds of things. And then below that, as part of the ballot language, there's some informational items that are required by law also. And as we've told, as we've talked about all along, the $175 million for an average valued house for a homeowner in Grand Rapids, it's less than $9 a month. A first-year millage of 2.07 and then a millage over the life of the bond issued, about 2.12. We anticipate issuing the $175 million in at least two issues. That's why the wording says two or more issues as we, as this thing gets passed and we see what the market looks like. Obviously, we can't spend $175 million quickly, that's why we'll do it in two issues. It's also is cheaper for taxpayers by doing it that way. Certainly, our financial advisor will advise us once the bond is passed in terms of what that looks like. If it is passed in November, to get it to market, to get the first tranche of dollars in, probably we're looking February, early March of 2016. But there'll be a lot of work to do between passage of the bond, actual dollars in place in terms of firming up our plans and getting the construction manager and all those work folks lined up to begin our expansion and our renovation. So, what we need from the board tonight is the approval of the resolution so that we can file the ballot language with the city clerk and get this thing on the ballot for November 3rd election.
Thanks. Are there any, is there any discussion or questions that people have about the language, about the plan, timeline, et cetera? Mr. Legrand.
Yeah, I've said this at previous meetings, but I think it's important for the public to know the two things, and we've had a presentation on this, but the two things that I think are very important for the fiscal conservatives among us are, first of all, that our district has been rated as incredibly efficient in terms of how we use money. So, we have a track record of using money carefully and I'm confident that we have the people in place in our, particularly in our physical facilities and the things who are going to watch this money carefully and make sure that it's spent very, very wisely. The second is, and Larry I'm sure could have said this and didn't, but historically, this is just a really prudent time to be talking about doing this, given the historic low interest rates that we've got right now, the prospect that those realistically have to go up sometime. Every time the Fed meets, there's discussion about raising interest rates. And so, I think it's really prudent for us to be making this invest, this community collective investment now, given those overall, given the overarching financial conditions we're in.
Any other?
No, I'm really impressed as well. I mean, we needed to do this, something like this, when I got on the board, but we weren't ready to do it then. So, in the work that's happened over the last few years, and I hear too many stories about how people then, so seven, eight years ago, were leaving the city because of the schools. Now, we're hearing people are coming back to the city because of the schools. And if we visit other school districts, I visit other school districts quite a bit and a lot of them have brand-new facilities for their high schools and we need to have these, our children deserve this as well. And it's an investment in the property, it's an investment in the city. And so, everyone will benefit from this and I'm really impressed with this. It's the right time and so I'm looking forward to the possibility.
Oh, Pastor Moody.
As board members, are there any talking points for Ross when the community approaches us about this bond issue?
Absolutely. We, you might recall, we originally shared the long version of the talking points, but there'll be a much abbreviated version. That's the elevator speech.
Yeah.
Yes, we appreciate it.
About the airline speech.
Absolutely. You know, this is kind of a pivotal point. Once, you know, if and when you vote to approve is when we go into full-blown campaign mode and that's when you'll see everything from those talking points and the informational side to what the Friends of GRPS will be doing.
Well, and I know that we're going to hear more about the campaign, but I'm hoping that we get, I see this also as an opportunity for us to have an excuse to knock on people's doors and talk to. So, nine of us walk in the city and talking to people and seeing what the schools, what people think about our schools, I think it's a real opportunity for true campaign. And I think with campaigns come learning opportunities. So, yeah, so maybe we got some Saturday mornings ahead of us, so.
I just want to be prepared for opposition.
Well, you know, I took a couple of notes and some things I think will resonate with, you know, just folks in the community is the fact that it is a modest amount and maybe some sort of reference or frame where we can, I guess, demonstrate what makes it a modest amount probably will be helpful. The two issues piece I think is also helpful in that we're doing due diligence to try to make sure we save the community money, you know, overall. And the capital campaign piece as well, maybe just frame just more simply that the district is going to raise the money to do more. You know, capital campaign, that phrase probably doesn't really resonate well with, you know, with folks on the street, but the fact that the district is going to do work to put something with it.
Right.
Does, you know.
That's where we got to hit, the streets. There's a certain core that do not truly understand.
All right.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
All right, it looks that we have four action items. And the first is the bond proposal authorization resolution, so can I get a motion?
President Baker, I'd like to make a motion for the bond approval resolution.
A second.
All right. Okay, so whenever you're ready, let's call it out.
Okay.
Unless, is there any further discussion? I should, okay.
Dr. Randalls.
Yes.
Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Phelps.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Mr. Matthias, yes. Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
President Baker.
Yes.
Pass all yeas.
All right. So, we can get that like, like a day ahead of time, we don't have to wait till the August date on, at a, okay. So, it's like, hate for traffic to get in the way, so. All right, the next is student advancement foundation donations request. Make the motion first and then invite our guests up, or?
Would the board like to hear first?
I think so.
Yes.
President Baker and members of the board, I would like to ask John and Michelle to come up and present.
Do you have plans for that yardstick?
I was like afraid, like, somebody's going to get their knuckle stuck. I do not carry around a yardstick with me.
Was there a reason for that?
To their, to our friends at MLive, Jim Hager was cleaning out his basement and found an old Helmholz home decorating yardstick. So, and I don't have one, my sisters do and I'm mad at them for it.
Very good.
So, I now have my own version, so.
Arm your helm, you did a wonderful job.
And Monica brought it to me, so thank you, Monica Scott.
Well, yeah, thank you. We're here to get your advanced approval for the proposals to the Student Advancement Foundation. As you know, they're our greatest champion, our biggest supporter and have been there to support the students of Grand Rapids Public Schools. And so, many of the programs are things that have been ongoing, that were funded in the previous years. And so, I'll walk through just a handful of them that are there. This is a total of about $140,000 in requests. One is the Blandford Field Trips. This is for first and third grade. The one change to this is that based on the teacher feedback, at the third grade level, they wanted a little bit longer time than, in years past, when we had a different agreement with Blandford, there was a much longer field trip experience. And instead, we aligned it with what the other school districts are doing and using kind of off their menu, which is aligned with the core curriculum. And so, they said they want a little bit longer. So, this is a little bit more than what was previous years, but that's $28,000 and that will ensure a two-hour experience for the third graders instead of the hour and a half. That will, between the two, that serves close to 2,500 students throughout the district, every first grader, every third grader minus center-based students. Second one is Teach for the Watershed. This is something that we engage with the West Michigan Environmental Action Council and Groundswell to, for all of our sixth graders. And sixth graders go through various watershed projects and this ask is for $25,000. Art Music Supplies, which is, this is one of the longest-standing investments, I believe, that SAF has made since sports and libraries, is providing those additional art and music supplies above and beyond what we're able to provide through the BOE, which really wasn't sufficient to really meet the needs of the students in art and music. That's at $45,000. The K-6 Art Enrichment Trips. Every student in grades K through 6 go through art enrichment trips. And so, it's trips to Civic Theater, it's trips to the Frederick Meyer Garden, to Grand Rapids Art Museum, a number of those entities that would not be possible if it wasn't for the generous support from SAF that covers the cost of these trips and ensures those children across K through 6 have access to these arts and cultural organizations in our community. The next one is Immersed, and this is the fifth grade version of the museum school, to make it as simple as it, this is where fifth graders, and the goal is eventually for all fifth graders in the district, right now it's targeted to a relatively small number, that where they have a week-long immersed experience at the Grand Rapids Public Museum. It's modeled after the design thinking place-based model will be doing for the museum school itself. Teachers get professionally developed around these and how they can incorporate lesson plans, incorporate the museum, the archives, and all the assets and resources of the museum into their daily lesson planning for an entire week. That's for $7,000. Lastly, is K-3 Libraries. In previous years, the Student Advancement Foundation had funded the refresh and restock of our libraries across the district. First, they funded just the replenishment of the libraries themselves and then there was ongoing kind of upkeep and maintenance. This year, we're looking to be a little more targeted. As you know, and I think you've been presented to, if not at the academic committee, we have a pre-K through 12th grade literacy continuum that's been developed by the academic team. And as you know, we've been at the forefront of the efforts statewide to focus in on third grade reading. And so, the request this year is to really focus in on the library investment K through 3, so making sure that the reading materials that are lexiled and exactly where they need to be to reinforce the academic plan and the pre-K 12, or the K-12 literacy plan. And so, we're looking at $10,000 for the K-3 libraries. Again, it's a total ask of $140,000.
And I think it's important just to note that these are the requests that are from the general fundraising that the Student Advancement Foundation does through the year, so Mine Chair, Luncheon, all of those different places where the community really comes out and supports the district. It doesn't include some of the targeted fundraising that we do, like for great sports, the K-8 Athletics Initiative and things like that. So, these are sort of the requests that our committee will be looking at next week that the district wants to help support so many of the great programs you guys are doing, so.
Well, thank you, Michelle. I just have to say that these are, the list, I'm thinking about my children's education and what they, what would have been missing had this list not been, I was like, this is quite a bit that really supplemented a lot. It's like, it's a big difference, so appreciate it. It's like, it's a big difference, so appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, can I get a?
Motion to approve the donation request from the Student Advancement Foundation.
Thank you.
A second.
Port.
All right.
Okay, Dr. Randalls.
Yes.
Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Felb.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
President Baker.
Yes.
Approved.
All right, that passes. A motion for the purchasing agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Acceptance.
Second.
All right. Okay, Dr. Randalls.
Yes.
Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Felb.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
President Baker.
Yes.
Approved.
All right, purchasing agenda passes. Next is a layoff resolution, but you want to ask Sharon to come up?
I do. Dr. Baker and members of the board, I would like to ask Sharon Pitts to come forward and share information on the layoff resolution, please.
Dr. Baker, Superintendent Neal, board members. As you know, as a result of the budget cuts that we had to make, there were staff that had to be reduced, and here we have paraprofessionals. In fact, we reduced initially, we started out with 45 paraprofessionals, but as a result of people leaving and some other changes, we were able to fill most of those positions. So these positions that we have left that we're bringing to you today, we don't have a place for them, we don't have funds for these positions, as well as the support, the family support specialist positions as a result of budget cuts. But we tried to retain as many staff as we can so that we can complete the programs that we have to. But unfortunately, and no one likes to be in this situation, but this is really where we are now.
Any questions? Or?
What was the number of staff being laid off?
So would it be just the, what you have today, so 22, I think?
That's right.
22?
Yeah.
About 22 employees. And that's substantially down from what we originally thought that we were going to have to lay off, so we're happy about that.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, sadly, I hope that we're going to see the day that we don't have to go through layoffs for our staff who work so hard. And they're so key. Absolutely, and paraprofessionals are really critical in the classroom. But just because we're doing a layoff right now, there's a chance that as things continue, staff leave, that we'll be able to recall them, and that's really our hope, is that we can recall them sometime when school starts, because we do know they are needed, they're critical.
And we've had lots of recalls, so.
Yes, it continues to happen, but it is, it does put employees in a flux, and we don't like that, in fact, unfortunately.
No other questions? All right, can I get a motion to support the layoff resolution?
Support.
No, I'd like to have a motion, can somebody?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request.
Support.
Paraprofessionals.
Support. Uh, Legrand. Well, Legrand.
Okay. Dr. Randalls.
Yes.
Ms. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Felb.
Yep.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Mr. Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
President Baker.
Yes.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion for the consent agenda grouping?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
Okay, Dr. Randalls.
Yes.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
Dr. Felb.
Yes.
Dr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. Legrand.
Yes.
Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody.
Yes.
Mr. Ross.
Yes.
Mr. Baker, President Baker.
Yes.
Is the agenda approved?
Mr. President.
Señor presidente.
All right, discussion items, we have no discussion items. Public comment for agenda or non-agenda items?
I have no cards.
Any late requests for a public comment? I see none. Superintendent comments?
President Baker and members of the board, I really do want to thank you for accepting the request for the resolution for the bond proposal. I do think that the time, I know the time is right, and I just appreciate the support, and I want the public to know that this is the right board, this is the right board to do this now for the children of the city, so I appreciate the support.
All right, can board member comments, I'll start from left to right, start with Dr. Paul.
I guess I just want to reiterate that there has been such a substantial lengthy process leading up to this bond, and the timing is absolutely right. I have utter confidence supporting and advocating for this bond, and there's no question in my mind that this is going to be an extraordinary investment in our community that we will all be pleased that we got there. So I will be out there as much as I can. I've been in circles already, I was in a group of nonprofit leaders, and they were questioning at what level they could do advocacy, and they were asking because they want to support the GRPS bond, because they feel so strongly about it, they recognize.
Wonderful.
It's good.
Mr. Ross?
No, just excited, no comment.
Okay. Uh, Mathias?
Don't I seem excited?
Huh? What'd you say?
I said, don't I seem excited?
You seem excited. If you guys know right now, this is his side.
He's really excited now, we can tell.
You can't see it, but he's jumping up and down right now.
We can tell by his face.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, just to see even the student advancement and just the funding there, the commitment that comes from the community in so many very different places, I think sometimes our parents don't realize, because that benefit to me, as a GRPS parent, is, feels like nothing, but in reality, a lot of people have come together to make it easier for my kids to kind of, to have that experience. So for us to support, for example, this bond, is really critical as a broader community saying yes to our public schools, so appreciate that.
Here, Slade?
I guess I would support that whole concept, and I really think the community is with us in this, we've done a lot of work, we get a lot of support, and I think we just need to continue on with what we're doing, excuse me, with our kids.
No comment.
Pastor Moody?
I'm ready to get started with the bond and get those talking points, because there are a lot of people out there who do have some questions, and there are certain groups who are forming right now to kind of challenge some of the things that we're doing, but I think we're going to win overall, and I think that's important. I also want to acknowledge that, you know, we've lost a retired teacher, Mr. Randall Burton, I want to keep his family in prayer. And also, we have a board member, Mr. Dave Legrand, who lost his father a week ago, we want to keep him lifted up as well, too. So with that, let's get the talking points to me, man, so we can get some stuff rolling.
Ms. Legrand.
Yeah, President Baker, you, you know, you talked about being out in other communities and seeing facilities that are really great, and I remember when I was asked at a high school, it shall remain nameless, but it was in GRPS, I was asked to go do, talk about vocation about a decade ago, and I remember walking into that high school and seeing lockers that hadn't been painted since who knows when, and walls that hadn't been painted, and think, and remembered thinking that the central message that building was giving, was giving was, we don't care about you. And, you know, the bricks and mortar that we provide for our kids, the physical space that we provide for them, is really a reflection of our community's values, and how much we value the kids and the parents who bring their kids to us, and how much we are able to, how well we're able to function as a community. And I'm, you know, really glad that Grand Rapids is what it is, I'm glad that Grand Rapids has successfully supported things we value, like roads and parks, and goodness knows, I like roads and I like parks, but I like schools a lot more, so I hope the community can come out and support this.
Well, I think we have tremendous needs, I think many of our kids go without, and certainly facilities and security are continuing to be very, very important to our district and to our families. I think it's very hard not to support a bond proposal at this time. I'm hoping that the public will join us in supporting. I think we've been very strategic, you know, we've been assured by staff that the community's behind it with over 70 presentations in the community, so let's be hopeful.
Thank you. You know, I think that John made a good point of connecting this to the gifts from Student Advancement Foundation, the work of the community, that this is a community that's behind Grand Rapids Public Schools, and we can look, all the summer programs that are happening this summer about our children, helping our children be better prepared for coming to school in the fall. And so I wrote this down, work of the community, that it isn't just that we hope that the community supports it and votes for it, but that actually the community sees it as their work, and I think that Wendy's point that nonprofits are already looking for ways to part of it, that this is a Grand Rapids campaign, this is a campaign for Grand Rapids, for the city of Grand Rapids. And so I'm really excited about this, and we, hopefully, that people will pick this up as the call to the city to do this work. And I'd also like to, I was thinking about, on my way over here, about David Legrand's month, and it's exhausting knowing what he's, his month, the loss of the father, the wedding for his son, and other big opportunities and challenges that have come his way, so anyway, I just want to say thanks for being a part of Grand Rapids Public Schools, David. So with that, we'll close.